All right, I'm gonna call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Council Pitts. Council Mo.
Here.
Council Rodley.
Here.
Council Stare.
Here.
Council Woodrow.
Here.
And Council Piscinary.
I'm here, thank you.
Do we have any ETA on Council Pitts? Alright, I'm gonna try to text him here while we're talking. We have a couple of interviews tonight. And I don't know AJ if you want, if you wanna, you are listed as the staff person for everybody.
I am filling in for the staff liaisons this evening. And we have four boards, commissions, and committees that we will be doing interviews for. We will start the Community Development Advisory Committee. We have four applicants for one opening. It is a partial term of two years. And we will start with Robert Nevin.
Merrily. You're still on mute Merrily.
I had a question as to whether we might be able to see a roster for the CDAC after we do the interviews. There's four people interviewing for one position. And it might be helpful to see the roster of the current group.
Absolutely, I can pull that on the screen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and Robert, we're just getting organized here. We will be right with you. AJ, Damian Saney's in the waiting room. And Neil, could you update us about how many people are joining us at home?
Yes, Mayor, we have nine attendees and eight panelists. And there are seven of us here in the council chambers.
Right, Robert, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Are you in a place where you could turn on your camera?
That's what I'm trying to figure out how to do.
Oh, there we go. Alright, we're gonna do a quick round of introductions and then I'm gonna go through and ask all the questions tonight. I mean, I'll give the rest of the council a chance to take notes while we're, while we're discussing this. I'm Sean Van Gordon, the mayor, and we'll go right down by wards.
Hi, Damian Pitts Ward one.
Emo Ward two.
Cory Rodley Ward three.
Leonard Stare Ward four.
Merrily Woodrow Ward five.
Joe Piscinary Ward six out of the Thurston area.
Alright, Rob, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So why are you interested in serving on the CDAC?
Um, I guess I've always been interested in serving on a board for a while now and I'd gotten an email from the Chamber of Commerce. Listed a few different boards that needed members and that one kinda jumped out at me. I've always been interested in the housing around here, so it kinda jumped out at me.
Can you describe your understanding of the role you will have in serving on CDAC and how it relates to the work on the council?
Um, kind of, I wasn't a hundred percent just based off of reading it, but from my understanding, it's based off of the different grants and money that comes into the community for what seems like low-income housing or condensed housing and then part of the board is deciding how that money gets dispersed.
And what do you see as current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
As far as like the housing, I think there, one, there's obviously not enough. It shows just by the real estate market how quickly a house goes on and off the market. As far as, you know, purchasing a house and then it seems like, you know, there's not enough housing, just period, for people, whether they're, you know, looking to rent, lease, or whatnot. And enough housing to house families. There's quite a bit of apartments in here that are probably single to two-bedroom apartments, but not as many that are more than that, so. I just, you know, obviously there's an issue with availability, so.
Right, very good. That is all the questions that we have for you. So we're gonna go ahead and let you go and go for interviews and then somebody from the staff is going to contact you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Melissa Glass and we will get her pulled up momentarily.
Can you hear us okay?
I can.
Oh, excellent.
I'm turning on the cameras. There we go, okay.
Did you hear the round of introductions that we did a couple minutes ago?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions and then we'll let everybody else take some notes. So why are you interested in serving on CDAC?
Well, we are fairly not just Springfield, but also Oregon. We moved here from Texas just about a year ago. And I'm really interested in getting more involved in the community. I've always been involved in the communities we lived in in Texas and I saw this, I think it was on Facebook that I read about it and as I kinda researched a little bit more about it, it just sounded like something that that was a great fit for me. I work with volunteers through Peace Health and as I'm talking to them and also just as coming here, realizing that housing is definitely a challenge coming from, from Texas. It's a little bit different, so just really wanting to get more involved and kinda work with just the city council, different members of the community and trying to figure out how we can be a best help to the community.
Could you describe your understanding of the role that you will have serving on CDAC and how it relates to the work of the rest of the council?
Yes, so it's working with the council and I think there's, I think it was said six other community members, correct me if I'm wrong. And it's just helping with the housing opportunities throughout Springfield. It's, I think, the lower income and, and, you know, economically-based housing especially. I know that it's, it's definitely needed. I think it's definitely an improvement over where we were in Texas for sure, but it's something that as we're getting more involved and I'm hearing more from the volunteers I work with and some of the staff members I work with and just the community in general, it seems to be something that really is in need. And such an honor to live in an area that addresses the need and really wants to try to find a fix and a help for the community.
What do you see as the current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
As far as housing, definitely lack of and the, the pricing, I think people are getting priced out of homes. We moved here and were able to rent, I think, right before the housing market went crazy, but trying to buy right now is not even an option because it's just something goes on the market and it's gone before you can even think about it. I think that's one of the, the issues. I think the another issue I've noticed since we kinda drive around is it, it seems, I love the fact that, that Springfield seems very clean as far as like the streets and stuff go, but I think sometimes it can be also some people's yards and, and areas kinda may look a little bit like they need some help. So I don't know if there are community organizations that go around and help. Whether it's older people or disabled people that can't help clean up after themselves, something like that I think would be, would be great too. So those are, I think, probably the two main areas that I would, I would love to see more help in, especially the Springfield area.
Alright, and I was supposed to ask a fourth question and the we do have a lot of different appointments that are still, still open. Would you consider serving on a different boarding commission if you were asked?
As long as I felt that it was a fit to, to me and to my passions and desires, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Our next interview is going to be Rebecca Kishiro and she will be up momentarily.
Hello, thank you for having me today.
Hi Rebecca, um, did you join at 5:30? Did you hear the round of introductions that we already did?
I did.
Okay, great. Then we are gonna go ahead and get started. Why are you interested in serving on the CDAC?
Well, my partner and I moved to Oregon, well, moved to Springfield, Oregon about three and a half years ago. And I always love to be an active member in my, any community that I live in. And prior to the pandemic, I was working with Springfield High, doing their mentor program. But with the pandemic, that all changed and so as things are starting to open back up, I'm really trying to get plugged back into the community and find like a good fit that I can be an active citizen in. And this this committee really seemed like it honed into both my professional and my academic background. I work at Oregon State University. My partner works at UVO, so we're kind of rivalries in that sense, but work in their housing department. So I think about the challenges for young people in housing all day, every day. I also have a master's degree in, in community, basically community development. It's called environment and community and I really focused on how communities are economically hit during the Timber Wars, how they created both internal and external capacity building to restore resiliency to their communities. And so I think that lens really, it would be valuable in this committee. And so, yes, I just wanna be a part of the Springfield and get plugged back in.
Great. Describe your understanding of the role that you will have serving CDAC and how it relates to the work of the council?
Absolutely. Um, the city of Springfield receives grant money from, or well receives head funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And it's really focused on affordable housing, resources for the unhoused, anti-poverty programs, and increasing infrastructure development. And as an advisory member, we'd be looking at different aspects of that and providing our insight to the council.
And what do you see as the current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Well, focused on this committee would be affordable housing, especially with an increase of a diverse population here in Springfield. And new people coming all the time. It's getting people to plant roots. Housing is such an essential part of that. And this, it's a challenge not for just Springfield, but every community here, especially on the West Coast, but yeah, that's, no, I would say number one and here in Oregon, the land use development with, in the, well, the limit of parcels within the land use development urban growth boundary, I think, is also a big challenge that we'd be facing in this specific committee.
And the, the last question I had is, we've got a couple more openings on different committees and commissions. If we asked you to serve on a different committee and commission, would you be willing to consider it?
Absolutely.
Alright, great. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Patricia Shutey.
I don't know if I did the right thing.
Can you hear us Patty?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
I'm trying to get back. I think I can you see me?
You're oh, there you are.
Oh, my goodness. There we go. My son-in-law is helping me out a little bit.
Great. Were, were you on at 5:30? We did a, we did a round of introductions. Did you hear the round of introductions? Alright, great. Why are you interested in serving on the CDAC?
Well, I bought a home here about three years ago, but it's not, but my experience with Springfield is actually not limited to three years. I was born at Sacred Heart and I've been back and, back and forth and out of the, out of the area for a while, but back, anyway, came back in. I worked, I've worked most of my adult life with low-income families, doing parenting and resource support. So I'm real familiar with housing issues and I've done a lot of resource work with families and then when my kids were little, I also experienced needing some support with housing. So briefly, even though I was working, got, was familiar with resources for low-income housing supports. And I'm really interested in being a, a real support to the community and being able to give a lot of my expertise now that I'm retired.
Could you describe your understanding of role you will have serving on the CDAC and how it relates to the work of the council?
Well, my understanding is, I'm, I would be here to provide a lot of my expertise as far as the background that I've had and, and input that I might get through projects that might be proposed.
And what do you see as the current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
Oh, my gosh, I think like everywhere there's the, the housing shortage. As far as affordable house is hitting everybody from every income level, especially, I think, especially from my expertise working with low-income families, I, I really see, I see a need not only with low-income families, but especially with people who are unhoused or living in conditions with other people that maybe aren't optimal because they can't afford their own living conditions. And I, you know, have experienced with a lot of low-income families and living in conditions that are not not real safe. I, there's just a need for a lot more low-income housing and housing in general for other income brackets. It's just since I bought down here, I've just seen prices rise and, and people really struggle with being able to afford even basic, you know, small apartment. People that are moving here for work or other schooling or otherwise. So, and I think, you know, also looking at land availability. I know that's always an issue of finding parcels that whether it's low-income or otherwise that are available and able to be zoned for the, the housing that's proposed.
And my last question would be, we've got several other boards and commissions that are open tonight. If we don't, if we don't place you on this commission, would you consider going, going and volunteering for a different committee?
Oh, yeah, that'd be awesome. I just would really love to be involved, be able to give back.
Okay, great. That's what we had. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Alright, before we go on to the next group, do you guys want to discuss CDAC since we have to, it looks like we have to choose one person here. So Joe?
Yes, thank you. I liked Robert Nevin. He's already, obviously he's engaged in our community already and I think from his perspective from the construction field, it would be a good ingredient to have in that specific committee. My second choice would be what the heck was her, it was Rebecca Kishiro. And she can, I think, can bring a lot to the table, but again, my first choice would, would be Mr. Nevin and then my, oh, wait a second, I'm sorry, Melissa Glass, Nevin and Melissa Glass, first and second choice for me.
Leonard. Thanks Sean. I, I actually had Rebecca Kishiro as my first choice. She has had a lot of education relevant to environment and community, which is directly relevant to what she'd be doing here and she's also working in university housing operations in Corvallis already. It seems like a really good fit for, for, for the CDAC. My second choice would be Patty Shute.
Corey.
First, I appreciate all four of these folks stepping forward and wanting to get involved and appreciated being able to read their applications and listen to what they have to say. My first choice would be Rebecca, also followed by Patricia.
Merrily.
That's why I wanted to see the current roster. We have, we, I appreciate everybody that applied too. We have four, okay, that's not gonna help me, okay. We have four candidates and I was looking to see if one of them might end up being a better complement to the current roster than, you know, but I can't tell by just looking at names, so. Gosh, I don't know. I, I thought they were all good. I didn't really have a I don't know if I had a preference. I was looking, I was trying to figure it out as to what might help background-wise or expertise and I think I probably, I probably fell in line again with Rebecca and Patricia because they both have some experience in the, in the area of, of expertise, but who knows if I had, if I had an idea as to what was also on the committee, one of the other ones might have turned out to be a better compliment to that, to the makeup of that committee, but I don't, I don't know. I don't have that information.
Steve.
Hi. Rebecca is my, my first choice and the reason is she showed, showed knowledge of Oregon's land use laws and the complications which, which is coming along. I don't know how anybody wants to know that stuff, but she knows it and I was impressed by that. So, and I'm, I'm the latest on, on this committee. I have wonderful people have been on the committee and I think she would be in addition to that.
Alright, Damian.
I would say number three would be my first choice. Number two would be my second choice, especially because they bring experience from outside of Oregon and that, not always, but I think inherently will enhance and redirect some conversations just based on personal experience. But yeah, number three is definitely my top.
Okay, so it sounds like that it's, that it's Rebecca. And then the, the remaining candidates, right, don't throw your notes away because as we go through the other commissions, there's plenty of other seats that are open. And if we see a good fit, we want, we want, really wanna go back and ask them to serve, to serve on a, on another committee.
I listen, Patricia, she's excited to serve on something and I really was glad to hear that, so I'm gonna put her to work.
Keeping, not keeping notes here Sean. Just for the record.
Alright, thank you. Alright, it looks like Arts Commission's next AJ.
And if I may change the roster a little bit, Savannah Bryan is our one applicant for two openings with the Arts Commission. I do not show her in the attendees list.
Okay.
So with your permission, we could move to the Museum Committee. David Schmunk is in attendance.
Alright, then let's do that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me.
Well, thanks for joining us from home. We're gonna go around since we just switched committees and do a quick round of introductions and then we'll get started with your interview questions. And then we'll go by, we'll go by word order through this. I'm Sean Van Gordon, I'm the mayor.
Guess I'm aware of that. I would hope I would be.
Hi, I'm Damian Pitts Ward one.
Steve Mo Ward two.
Cory Rodley Ward three.
Leonard Stare Ward four.
Merrily Woodrow Ward five.
Joe Piscinary Ward six from the Thurston area.
Yes, we're neighbors.
Yes.
Alright, why are you interested in serving on the Museum Committee?
Well, you know, even as a child, I was very interested in current events. I mean, I was watching the news at five. At five years old, the news at five, at five. And, and history, current events, not only, not only locally, but globally. And I was born and raised here, so I have personally witnessed a good deal of Springfield's history, more than I would care to admit sometimes. When I was born here in 1960, Springfield was less than 20,000 people. And a lot has changed since then and I've seen a lot of it. And as my, my father, Dick Schmunk and my uncle Nate Connect started a business here in 1953. I was very immersed in the social and business community from the, in the 1960s on. And had an opportunity to witness a lot of, a lot of Springfield's history during that time, get to know a lot of the movers and shakers that, that formed that history. I, I knew Ed Harms, Bob Straub, Darwin Courtwright. I particularly knew well Ken Keasy. I actually changed tires on further more than one time, more than once, and that was the original further, not the, not the new and improved one. Jack Keigendahl, Square Deal, Jesse Maine. I first met him when he came to town. He formed a task force for for neighborhood gangs and I was actually his he, he asked me to co-chair that and we worked together on that. Sandra Gordon Rennie, Sandra, the first female mayor of Springfield. They were across the street neighbors from me for 20 years. Vance Freeman was a very good friend of my father's. Bob and Rob Adams, Bob Adams was a very good friend of my father's. As well as Alvin Reed and Chuck Ritchie. And I actually think I purchased a watch in Chuck Ritchie Jewelers, which was right about where you guys are sitting when the city hall was Spring Village Mall. And Scotty Alexander from Alexander's, which is where the parking lot is in front of you guys, was my best friend growing up in the 60s before the, before the store burned and, and they moved to, to Washington. And and I realized as I'm getting older, I've realized that there's fewer and fewer of us who have who have, who have witnessed this history and, and who have not only witnessed it ourselves, but know people who witnessed it. I have a friend Jay Swafford out in, who lives out in the Mohawk Valley where I, where we had a ranch when I grew up. And he has over 40,000 photos of, of the Mohawk Valley logging in Wendley. He still lives in their family home that was built when the mill was out there, the Booth Kelly Mill was out there. And so I realized there's not many of us like, like myself and Steve Mo left and if we don't get involved, we're gonna lose a chunk of that. I mean, we're not gonna be around forever and I feel really obligated and I've, and I've, I've wanted to be a part of, of the city since, since I was in my twenties. But I just never have and I feel like at this point I can, I can really contribute.
Thank you. Describe your understanding of the role you will have serving the Museum Committee and how it relates to the work of the council?
Well, I've never served on a committee before, as I mentioned, but so I don't know exactly what, what my role would be and I would suspect that it would be evolving. There's, it's a nine committee board, I understand. There's only seven members currently. So I think I'll, for the first few meetings, I'm just gonna keep my eyes open and my ears open and figure out where I fit best. I've been an avid photographer since I was nine years old. I set up my first darkroom when I was 15. And photographs are my passion. And so Smith Mountjoy is one of my, one of my heroes. I don't know if you're aware who Smith Mountjoy is, but if you see any of the old pictures of Springfield from around the turn of the century, the Springfield sign on the, on the hill, he took all those. He was, he was a mill riot at Booth Kelly. And all the pictures you see around Springfield, the restaurants in, in grocery stores are all by him and anyway, I digress. So my understanding is that our role as the committee is to Our role as the committee is to. Uh investigate and report back to you on things you wish us to look into, projects and other. Queries and then amongst ourselves. Investigate and come up with projects and present them to you for consideration and direction. And uh. And so uh. Uh I I kind of see that as as we're an arm of of the investigative arm and advisory arm of the city council.
Thank you. What do you see as the current issues and challenges facing the city of Springfield?
Was the other, other applicant said housing. Housing, 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 affordability. And availability. And though we don't have the challenges of the unhoused that Eugene does, that doesn't mean that situation doesn't exist. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't address it and be part of the solution. Uh transportation. We have a project going on on Main, which is very polarizing. But we have to look forward to the future. I don't mean to get too Jetsons on anybody, but it's not gonna be that many years. In thirty years, most of the traffic on, at least on Main. Is gonna be self-driving and what's gonna work better, roundabouts or traffic lights? Uh and and even without self-driving cars, everything's been proven that 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 they are. They are safer, more cost efficient, uh and better all around. Our, 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 our philosophical divisions also concern me. My, the Springfield of my youth. Is not nearly as interesting a place as Springfield of today. There wasn't the diversity. There wasn't, there wasn't uh uh the influx of of ideas and the like from outside the area. It was very homogeneous and uh and uh but with our growth in that area, it's created some divisions. And that's, that's a challenge. And we need to, we need to bring people together and have them talk, not just yell at each other from from either side, but talk to each other. Come to the middle and talk. And again, just to wrap it up, getting under, getting citizens to understand that we're not just doing things for today. We're looking out to the future.
All right. Thank you so much. Um that was all the questions that I had, so we will discuss the appointment. And then somebody from the staff will get back, get back to you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right. Um so are folks good with David?
Yeah, I'm fine with him. Yep.
That was a hell of a campaign speech that you just made. Really, um I uh that it was, I was impressed, yeah.
Do we, and I know we've got those extra folks kind of hanging out. Do you guys want to discuss? You want to save that conversation to the end or do you want to discuss trying to place some of those folks on the museum committee as we go?
Were, were there any more openings to the historic museum committee?
Believe the museum has. Let's see. I don't see on the AIS. AJ, do you know how many openings they have? I think they had two.
Museum has two openings currently.
Cory.
But I think the Historic Commission also has more openings than applicants, so maybe it makes sense to talk about them all together.
There we go. All right. You guys are keeping track of your own notes or not notes? All right, AJ.
No notes.
Let's keep going. Um I don't know if you see Savannah or not. Are we, are you bringing me Historic Commission next?
I am bringing you the Historic Commission, which is Taryn Wood.
Perfect. Hello.
Hello.
Um we're gonna go and do a quick round of introductions. Um just so. We're since we're switching committees, so we'll do them by ward order. I'm Sean Van Gordon, I'm the mayor.
I'm Damian Pitts, City Council, Ward one.
Steve Mo, Ward two.
Corey Rodley, Ward three.
Leonard Stare, Ward four.
Merrily Woodrow, Ward five.
Joe Pictionary, Ward six, Thurston area. Thank you.
All right, are you, are you ready for the questions, Taryn?
Yep.
Why are you interested in serving on the Historic Commission?
Well, uh that's actually an interesting question. Um I had discovered the Booth Kelly Bridge. You know, out by uh Moh- Mohawk, um sorry, not Mohawk, Marcola Road and Camp Creek Road. Um I wanted to discuss that with the commission and then the commission actually invited me to join them and to apply. And I'm like, no, this is actually a great idea. Um I've been currently studying history at Eastern Oregon University. And uh I think that this is a great way to help and serve the community and I've always had an interest in historic buildings, so I think this would be a great fit for me.
Could you describe your understanding of the role you will have serving as a Historic Commissioner and how it relates to the work of the council?
Yeah, I think that the role of the Historic Commission is to um best figure out. How preservation can be attained for historic places and buildings will also accommodate in the people. That currently reside in those places. Um but ultimately, it's about serving the community. And in that way, that's how I see um the Historic Commission's role. In terms of how it relates to the council.
What do you see as the current issues and challenges for the city of Springfield?
I think one of the biggest challenges for the city, and I think this is often overlooked, is earthquake challenges. I think that if there was an earthquake in the near future, um we just aren't prepared for any of that. And so I think if we're going to be prepared for the great Cascadia earthquake, we need to start thinking more along those lines. And ramping up our earthquake preparedness. And that includes reinforcing brick buildings that currently exist. And including many historic buildings and stuff like that.
All right, those were all the questions that I had. Um we are gonna debate and discuss the appointment. And then somebody from the staff will get back to you. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Let's deal with the Historic Commission appointment. I'm looking for either head nods or comments folks want to make.
Very articulate. I think it's gonna be a good question.
Yeah, it looks like he volunteers at the museum and absolutely, yeah, no, no issues.
Yeah, uh I think he's fine, but I mean, honestly, I wish his his history, Historic Commission would move away from. Worrying about buildings and and focus on living history as well. So, I mean, he kind of reinforces the the past narrative. But I mean, he seems energetic and wants to learn, so we'll just have to get him out of that.
All right, so we're good preparing him to to go forward. Um and I'm gonna just double check before, have we seen Savannah yet?
We have not.
Okay, so can you, can somebody? Go ahead, Joe.
I was just gonna give you my opinion.
No, go right ahead.
So I agree with Damian. It's uh, it's pretty insightful from him in regards to where our. Historic Commission should be at. I I completely agree. I think there can get um off-centered pretty easily. Similar to like maybe the bike pit, but I think that it's, we definitely need to do our Historic Commission work. In regards to our, our human past in the city and and what kind of of. Development and what, how did they influence our city? And that's, that's something I would, I would like to see more of. I know that we have a huge. Uh influence from the Kennedy era and the World War Two era. We even have whole neighborhoods that were part of that era. And uh we just don't hear much about that and it seems like the focus is shifting away from that and I don't want to lose that.
All right, thank you. So I think we can try to reschedule Savannah for the next, next time we do this. And then um if. If anybody wants to discuss um dealing with the three other folks we had from CDAC, now would, now would be a good time. So we have, we have one spot. It looks like we have one spot left on the museum committee, two more spots on the Historic Committee. And then without Savannah, two openings on the Arts Commission. Damian.
So first, I think we need to be careful displacing folks, you know. A lot of them said, yes, I'd be willing. Uh but we might want to ask the question, hey, what do you know about this board? How, you know, how can you traverse from wanting to be on this one to the next one? Because eh 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 we need to get out of the habit of displacing bodies. We we want people to want to be a part of this. To uh establish continuity, to be that commission or committee's biggest cheerleader. And so I think we need to reengage and ask, maybe not the all the questions, but ask what they know about the specific commission. And if they want to do it. And so maybe that's not something that we do, that that we 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 we. Put the charge out to them tonight, but have them do their due diligence and see, is this something that they really want to do? Because, you know, I'm sure all of us, there are certain boards that we don't, if even if we had the opportunity, we wouldn't be on. And we really need to avoid displacing people just because we need some, some bodies.
Okay, so I think we've got a couple of choices here. Um last time we went through this, we sort, we tried to sort of pull the remaining candidates. To see if what, if they had a specific choice and that didn't go over very, that didn't go very well because we just didn't get a response. So I think our choices we're sort of facing is we can just simply ask them to reapply and go through another appointment process. Or we might come back and ask them specifically about uh an individual committee before we place them.
Yeah, why don't you ask them at this point if they'd be interested in any of those openings?
Merrily.
Yeah, I, my thought was, we have certain positions open. Send an email to the candidates that didn't get selected tonight. Let them know what openings there are and if they have any interest. And then, and then do what Damian said, ask them to research it and make sure that it's one that they're interested in and to let us know. But I, if you, if we let them know what's out there, we may find out that somebody's really interested in something that we may not have known of, known about. So I think if we let them know what's open, they, it gives them an opportunity to to look at them and say, oh, yeah, I wouldn't like, I would, I wouldn't mind being on that. So I think, leave it up to them.
Joe.
Yes, thank you. I I completely agree. I don't think it's, uh I think it does, the committee is a disservice if we say, hey. We got this person that was extra from a previous interview and they didn't show any interest in your committee earlier, but but we're gonna go ahead and hand them off to you. And I mean, it just, I think it devaluates the committees. And I think that people that is an excellent point with Damian. Is is that, you know, we need to, I would rather have a smaller committee with openings. Than a committee that has people that aren't either qualified or really don't have a desire to be there. And I think that, um you know, they're great people for sure. And I'm not trying to minimize them, but I think that uh we deserve it. We deserve our, to do the best we can for ourselves and the city to have these committees filled with people. That want to be there and that have shown an interest in the first place. And if they have an interest, and I don't have a problem with contacts and hey, we got these openings. Just so you know, that's a great recruitment, but they need to jump through the hoops as far as I'm concerned. I want to know the answers to those questions on the questionnaire. So uh, you know, if they, they're interested, fine, they can reapply and then we can look at them later, which goes back to in the future here, we're looking at. Uh I think when we're doing some uh, looking at things internally and how we run, do our business and run the city. That we need to look at this process and really get it, get it down to something that's better. It just seems like. Your, your famous word, Sean, is be clunky and it is totally clunky. And we need to smooth out the edges and do a good job or better job at at committee selection. And uh so that way, again, we have people that are there. We are respecting the people that are already on the committee by give, sending them people. That will help them as opposed to a big learning curve. So I'm done.
No fair using my word of the day. All right, uh Leonard, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I I agree with Counselor Pictionary. The other side of this is that um the people who are being offered these other positions. If they were offered the other positions, we we run the risk of making it appear like a consolation prize. And it might be sort of a, it 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 might be devalued in their minds as well. So I I actually agree. I think everybody should just be given an opportunity to apply again.
Okay, so I'm hearing, let's put out the applications again and then let's let the, let the folks that we didn't get selected know that we're putting them out. And invite them to apply.
Perfect. So just as a a quick recap, I will be reaching out to all of the applicants and thanking them for applying. I show that Rebecca Kishiro will be appointed to a two-year term for the Community Development Advisory Committee. As of the March seventh regular session. I will also reach out to Savannah Bryan and and find out if there was a technical difficulty. Um we will be appointing David Schmunk to the museum committee for a full three-year term. And we will appoint Taryn Wood to the Historic Committee for a full four-year term.
Correct.
And those will all come back at the March seventh meeting.
Perfect. All right. I think that is all we have for the evening. So thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn us. Have a good night.
We're completely done, done for the night?
We're done.
That's it.
Woo hoo, good night.